Well, thanks for the introduction and thank you all for being here. This meeting is kind of inspiring to my office because we've been trying to reach out to the larger community working on community engagement in medical research and obviously a lot of you who are engaged in that are here. And I think it's becoming a movement. I think we need something more organized as a movement to make community engaged research in medicine more of the norm rather than the exception. But obviously this meeting is an indication that that movement is beginning to organize and come together. So I wanted to talk today about one initiative that we've been working on and that's the National Microbiome Initiative that we launched in May through the White House. And I'd like to use it as an example of how community engaged research can play into a very basic science and also a translational science field, but how I think it should be infiltrating everything that we do in medical research in one way or another. And so I'd like to give you an example and then hear your thoughts on how we could build on this and perhaps use it as a model to make it more of the norm in research. So the microbiome, for those of you who haven't been following the field, is the collection of microorganisms, bacteria, viruses, fungi, and other microscopic organisms that inhabit a particular environment. And so that's a very loose definition, but it is functional because essentially every surface and every organism and every habitat on Earth has its own microbiome. And so some of the examples are here. We know a lot about many of these habitats and very little about others. And so an example is the soil, which has been studied for about 300 years. The microbiome has been well-known for about 150 years. And we still know that although it's the most complex microbiome on Earth, we don't really know how it functions. We also know that in the case, for example, of the mammalian microbiome, the microbiome of the gut dictates many, many diseases and health conditions. And the mice you see there have been modified by which microbiome they received. These were germ-free mice that have been recolonized with human microbiomes, either from an obese person or a lean person. And you can see the difference in their phenotypes. This is just one example of the many places that we're beginning to see microbiome connections being made in human health. There are now very clear distinct connections with diabetes, obviously obesity, asthma, autism. There's almost no class of diseases that hasn't been linked in one way or another to the microbiome. But the frustration both in the human microbiome as well as the soil and every other habitat is that we don't know a lot about mechanisms and we don't know a lot about what governs the microbiome. And that's what really drove the formation of the new national initiative. So I wanted to just talk about where it came from initially and then some of the goals and then the commitments that we've received from the community and then how that has led into community engaged research in the microbiome. So the National Microbiome Initiative started partly because it's so integral to so many of the president's various initiatives. So clearly, precision medicine that I'm sure many of you have followed is one of the president's signature accomplishments and initiatives. And the microbiome is one component of precision medicine. It's absolutely essential. Not only do human genes and human metabolites and all the other things that are measured in precision medicine shape our health, but the complement of microorganisms that we carry certainly shapes health as well and need to be accommodated in any models of health that we develop through precision medicine. His energy and agriculture and climate change initiatives are all shaped by microbiome science. A lot of microbiologists would rather you didn't know is that most of our greenhouse gases that emerge from the Earth itself are actually put into the atmosphere by microbes. Now, they're also the greatest user of greenhouse gases and they fix more carbon than all of the plants put together. So they have both positive and negative impacts on our environment, but we can't move forward with any of these initiatives that the president has stated as priorities without some understanding and engagement of microbiome science. So it's also an area of tremendous growth. When we first started talking about the microbiome initiative in the White House a couple of years ago, there were almost no companies dedicated to microbiome science. Now there are quite a few. Last year, one was valued by Bloomberg at $1.9 billion. It has no products or maybe one product yet, but it has incredible potential for growth. And now there's a fleet of new companies starting to emerge to manipulate the microbiome, to use microorganisms or chemicals or in some cases microbial transplants to change the human microbiome in ways that promote health. And I think this is going to be an area of tremendous growth in the future. So OSTP, my office, the Office of Science in OSTP, was very interested in what the federal agencies thought needed to be done in this area. So we convened 12 federal agencies who all had a very intense interest in and were making investments in the microbiome. And we had them write a fast-track report in a few months about what the investment currently is and then what are the needs going forward. We simultaneously convened several groups of scientists from across the microbiome community and then from outside the community, physicists, nanotechnologists, people who worked on technology or scientific issues that clearly impinge on the microbiome or could be used for the benefit of microbiome research. And then we put out a broad request for information and got hundreds of ideas from the community in response to our federal register request. What emerged was amazingly consistent among all of the processes that we used. And what came out first is that there were questions that are cross-cutting in all microbiomes, from the mouse to the soil to the ocean to the human. Microbiomes have some similar ways of behaving and we have similar questions about them. And one that came up over and over was what's a healthy microbiome? In fact, we can't define that in a human or in the ocean. We also know that microbiomes are hard to change, many of them, particularly what we think of as healthy ones. They're very hard to manipulate or change, but then sometimes they break down and they change rather easily. We have no idea what causes that transition. And that came up throughout the different habitats that the scientists and agencies that we interacted with talked about. We also heard a lot about the technology that's needed, that the microbiome is, the study of it, is being limited by the technology at hand. And certainly, the microbiome field has been generated largely by new sequencing and molecular methods that made it possible to avoid culturing microorganisms because 99% of the microorganisms in the world can't be cultured by current techniques. And so that allowed us to circumvent culturing and see who is there in a much broader and comprehensive manner, but we still need more methods. Culturing and DNA-based methods are great, but we need more and many different kinds. And so detecting and measuring and then mathematically modeling and making predictive models of microbial communities is critical. And a theme that came up throughout those discussions of the technology that was needed was that in addition to measuring the communities and describing them and the bacteria themselves or fungi or viruses, we also needed to be able to measure the chemicals that they release because small molecules are the way that bacteria in particular communicate with each other. And communities, which are the backbone of microbiome science, are regulated by the small molecules that are exchanged among the organisms in those communities. And so what we heard repeatedly was that we need not only means to detect organisms but chemicals and then we need new computational methods to integrate all that information because of the complexity of the data sets that we're dealing often with thousands of species. We're dealing with millions of genes among those species and then probably many millions of chemical compounds that are carrying messages within those communities. So with those questions as the basis, we also asked what was needed to take microbiome science to application. And over and over, we heard we need to be able to change microbiomes at will easily. And so we first documented some of the parallels about change. And this is just one example of the behavior of human microbiomes, these are gut microbiomes, in response to antibiotic use. And what's been found in a number of studies is, and the arrows indicate when antibiotics were added to the system, was that after you add an antibiotic, the community gets very unstable and you begin to see very rapid change. Then after a while, it kind of settles out, but it settles out to a new norm. The new normal does not look exactly like the original microbiome, but it will often persist for as long as it's studied, years in fact. So there's an interesting phenomenon that antibiotics are like coming at a microbiome with a very, very strong nuclear weapon, changing the microbiome radically, and then the microbiome finds its new stable state and we have no idea how that happens. And so that was a question that we heard repeatedly from the medical and mammalian community. How do these microbiomes stabilize themselves? Why do they change in the first place as a result of antibiotic treatment? We have some hypotheses, of course, about that. But then how do they find this new steady state that is different from the original? When we talked to people studying the Gulf of Mexico after the big Deepwater Horizon oil spill, we found that the question is very much the same. And if the analogous intervention is the oil spill with antibiotics. Of course, we're talking at a different scale, but the phenomenon and from a community level, a microbial community level, is pretty much the same, that after the oil spill, the bacteria in the Gulf of Mexico were changing rapidly and the composition of the community, the overall numbers of the community changed radically. And eventually, it leveled out. And today, it's again a very stable microbiome, but it's different from the original. And that's exactly the story we heard, of course, with antibiotics. So that said to us that if you look across all of these sites, we heard it again with lakes, if you mix a lake from top to bottom, you see this radical change and then a stabilization to a new steady state. So after we heard this over and over, we said, okay, this has got to be the cross-cutting, one of the cross-cutting themes to truly understand microbiomes. And there may be situations where studying the human microbiome is most appropriate, but we may get faster insight from studying another system where we can manipulate it at will without ethical complications or where we can introduce new organisms or completely remove the microbiome and replace it with a new microbiome at will. And so we thought there was some real value and what we heard from the community was that there's real value in studying these microbiomes in parallel. The final part that we heard over and over is the need to be able to manipulate the microbiome and harness microbiomes. And the attempt to change microbiomes is very old. And this is just one example and it go back hundreds of years, but just one example of a very dramatic case of Ilya Medchenkov, who eventually got the Nobel Prize for other work. But around 1900, he became very interested in his own gut microbiome. And he decided he wanted to change it by eating yogurt. So he ate about a gallon of yogurt a day with live cultures in it. And he found that sure enough, having those live bacteria did change his gut microbiome. But as soon as he stopped eating the yogurt, within 24 hours, the microbiome had gone back to its original state and none of the bacteria from the yogurt were detectable, at least from, by the methods he used in those days. We still don't know why that is. We still don't know the nature of what we would call robustness, the ability of a microbiome to bounce back to its original state. And of course, there are situations where we want that to happen. We want the microbiome, for example, after treatment with antibiotics, to go back to its original state, which we presume to be a healthy state. But we don't know the basis for that. And of course, in other situations, we want to change a microbiome for benefit of the host or the environment, and we don't know how to do that either. So that has become a theme of the National Microbiome Initiative. So the goals of the initiative are to lead to interdisciplinary research that looks at microbiomes in parallel, trying to ferret out the rules that govern all microbiomes, not just one particular one. And perhaps come up with the principles for not only what changes a microbiome, but also what makes it stable and then how we can intervene in a microbiome to manipulate its content or structure and ultimately function. The second part is providing a platform, some platform technologies that will allow all microbiomes, whether they reside in humans or oceans or soil, to be probed in much more minute detail than we can do today with our current methods. And then finally, developing a new workforce through microbiome studies, public engagement, citizen science, and several other initiatives that many of our partners are developing. So we found that the federal government has actually invested quite a lot for microbiome, about $900 million over three fiscal years. There are new investments that we announced in May from the federal government as well as $400 million, and that number is growing, that we announced from non-federal sources. But one of the small areas that we announced efforts in that we would really like to see grow is the community-driven research or community-engaged research on the microbiome. And we have one particular example that has been so far very successful that we'd like to just throw out as a model and invite the community to come up with more examples of microbiome research that can be conducted in collaboration with community members and scientists at, in most cases, universities. So one of the collaborations that emerged from our effort to launch the National Microbiome Initiative was through the ministries for precision health, and they've changed the name, maybe Precision Medicine now, which told us that they really wanted to bring parishioners from across the country to the table to engage in precision medicine. And a number of our microbiome researchers were very interested in this aspect of precision medicine. And so we got them in touch with each other. And what emerged was one of the more interesting collaborations that I've observed. University of Chicago has a microbiome center that studies microbiomes in lots of different habitats and particularly in its role in human health. And they worked together, the ministries representatives and the scientists at the University of Chicago Medical School, worked together to define problems that were of common interest. And the representatives of the ministries focused in on sickle cell anemia and gun violence as two of their top concerns. And we in fact don't know, but there are a couple of hints, whether the microbiome plays any role in the development and pathway for sickle cell anemia or whether it could even be used to alleviate some of the symptoms. There are just some correlations. And so this seemed like a really exciting way forward. The second area was something of common interest to the ministries representatives as well as the scientists at Chicago, and that was the implications of, for children, of being exposed to inner-city gun violence and the suffering of PTSD that resulted and how that affected the microbiome. And then ultimately, of course, going the other way, could the microbiome affect that response and perhaps be used to alleviate the PTSD? And so they have been working together on these two projects and it has, I think, so far been a pretty unusual collaboration that I hope will lead to science that wouldn't be done any other way and lead to engagement of citizens and community members in science who never would have thought about microbiome. Probably many of them never heard of the microbiome and now they are becoming experts in the research process on the microbiome. Some of the other projects that we've heard mentioned are examples like what is the effect on the microbiome of exposure to toxins? And that could be either in urban communities or farm communities in the case of pesticides. Living with farm animals, for example, is another one. How does that affect the human microbiome? We have some information about that, particularly with regard to antibiotic resistance, but we need to know an awful lot more. And then what is, what do farm practices do not only to the soil that is being managed, but then to the people who work that soil? There's pretty good evidence that some of our microbiome probably comes from soil. And it may be that children eating soil, which is a common practice among little kids, that's one of the ways, in fact, we may acquire some of the microorganisms that live within us. So if you extrapolate that, then perhaps the farm management methods we use could be not only affecting the health of plants and the persistence and health of our soil, but also the people who live on that land. So those are just some of the examples of the kinds of projects that are of interest to citizens and communities as well as to our scientists. So the national initiative is hopefully going to lead to some very fundamental ideas and principles that will help us manipulate microbiomes in the future, predict microbiome behavior, but also will lead to good applications that will help us manage microbiomes at all scales and in all habitats. And secondly, we're hoping that it will lead to a prominent new form of research, which is represented well in this room, but where there is a true partnership between university or company researchers and members of communities that have particular health or environmental concerns and questions that they want to be asked. And I think that will lead to more creative science. There's an enormous literature showing that creativity and innovation is fostered by unlike people working together, people with different backgrounds and different ages, different experience. And there's no question that this will enrich the field of microbiome research as well as serving our communities better than researchers would without the influence of those communities. So with that, I'd like to stop and if there's time, answer any questions about the National Microbiome Initiative or anything else you'd like to ask about.
I think it's very helpful to give some ideas about conditions that might be relevant to communities as they're thinking about what new approaches and how to consider engaging in research related to the microbiome. One of the earlier pictures you showed were the obese mouse and the one that was not. Are there true signals that you think, is that a low-hanging fruit area that we should be approaching? Because I think there are a lot of people who are really interested in obesity.
Yeah, I think that metabolic syndromes in general, obesity and diabetes in particular, will be shapeable by changing the microbiome. We're still at the stage of correlation with much of this. The mouse studies are the best that show cause and effect with particularly obesity. There's some evidence like that emerging with diabetes as well with model mammalian systems. But I think that those will be very powerful connections. One of the reasons that I'm so optimistic about the microbiome is that if you look at precision medicine, one of the biggest tools we have is the human genome. But if you find a connection between a gene and a condition, you really aren't very close to a cure or a treatment, right? That gives you the target perhaps to build your drugs around. And that's the best at this point that we can do. And it's an enormous step, but it's still a long ways off. With the microbiome, it's the only organ in the human body that can be fully replaced without surgery. And so if we knew how to manipulate it, once we saw these correlations and could demonstrate causation with conditions, if we knew how to change the microbiome, perhaps we could treat them. And none of these diseases will be all due to the microbiome and I want to make that absolutely clear. There's no question that these are complicated diseases and they're probably going to, many of them, be broken down into subgroups over time. And some will be more influenced by the microbiome than others. Some are purely genetic and probably don't have a microbiome connection. But there's evidence now that even many of the most genetically dictated diseases also have microbiome connections. So I think we're going to find many cases where, yeah, low-hanging fruit is exactly right.
Thank you for the incredibly foresight. The foresight involved in thinking about this for the future and its connection. One of the major emerging hypotheses around asthma and immune responses is this so-called hygiene hypothesis. And the recent studies by the Amish, comparing the Amish and the Mennonites, gave further evidence to that model. But that's clearly an interaction between the mammalia and the microbiome of the environment and kind of the interaction of the two. And I wonder if you'd say more about that, the connection of this major emerging hypothesis with the national initiative.
So there's, as you alluded to, there's, I think, emerging evidence that exposure to certain microorganisms and perhaps allergens early on suppress later immune responses. And one study that is very complimentary to the Amish and Hutterite study that I think is really powerful is where they found that they, children with asthma were lacking four species of bacteria by the time the asthma developed. Then they found that in fact, they could predict which children would develop asthma based on the infant's composition of their microbiome. And so then they induced an asthma-like condition in mice and they were able, and if they transferred the microflora or the microbiome from the kids that had asthma, that would aggravate the asthma condition. But if they added to that the four species of bacteria that were missing, they had a very, very high cure rate in the mice. And so of course, now they're trying to do that in humans as well. So I think we're going to get down to mechanism on asthma probably as rapidly as anything, starting with the broad hygiene hypothesis and then maybe getting down to single organisms. And there are people in this initiative group who are working on the asthma connection. In fact, the University of Chicago group is one of them. So absolutely, I think that's one of the first things we're going to see being treatable. And again, asthma is a, you know, complex condition involving many, many different causes, but at least for the component that is associated with the microbiome, I think we're getting pretty close to understanding it and then treatments will come from that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought that was very informative and there's, my question has kind of two parts to it. One is, I think it's, first I want to say it's great that you're thinking about it involving community in these discussions. But I was struck by your example about gun violence and the microbiome. And in particular, it strikes a couple of cohorts with me that I hope the group is going to invest, think about. It's the concept that although we have a question, the idea that we're studying something in the context of something that we know is harmful and that we study sort of the effects of that harmful thing and we invest a lot of money in studying that when we don't do anything about the harmful thing in and of itself. And this is the Tuskegee, it's like the same thing as the Tuskegee. We know syphilis is harmful, we go and we study sort of what are the effects of syphilis. And I think there's a real danger in this line of engagement where we have to be really, really careful about what it is we're doing when we engage along these lines where we're saying, oh, we're taking on the social and we're taking on the kind of more biological. I think, I would just hope that the group thinks through that and engages community on that. Because I would expect that really the community actually is going to understand this at some point. And then you're then at risk, your program also being at risk because you're kind of taking on this paradigm and there's maybe not, we need to think through that, that piece.
I think that's just a brilliant point, really important. And I would distinguish that I don't think these experiments are taking on the social. I think just because we use a new community to bring insight into the science, we're still doing science. It's just a different group of people being the scientists and that includes the community. I absolutely agree. We have to get to the root of some of these social problems, but assuming that some of them will persist, we may need to know what the implications are of things like gun violence that I don't think we're going to rid our society of.
Why not something that actually is not related to social determinants?
Because that's what the people involved, the community, wanted. That question did not come from the researchers, it came from the community. And they were not apparently representing people who have suffered PTSD as a result of natural disasters. Their immediate experience was kids in urban areas, and that's what they wanted to know the answer to. So I think it raises an interesting question, as did the previous comment, how much do we then try to shape the questions that communities come up with? If they say that's what they're interested in, then how far do we take it beyond that to try to shape the social questions as well as the scientific questions that they are interested in? I don't know the answer to that, I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Hi, the question I have is that was the question about gun violence from the community's perspective in terms of inter-community violence, or did it also include police violence?
As far as I understand, it was both, and I have not seen the exact design of the experiment. It's a really great question, and given that it was in Chicago, my guess would be it was definitely both. Running a little bit late, but you're getting lots of questions, so if you have time for one more.
My question is, how much information was provided to the community before they decided to participate? For example, did they give them as much information or less information than the people had at Tuskegee?
Oh, yeah, that's a really good question. And that's where, we were talking earlier about the need to have some norms and best practices in community-engaged research. And if anyone knows if this is developing, I'd really like to hear about it. Because I think this is a new field where the ethicists and the researchers and the communities hopefully will work together to develop that. As I understand the interaction, it came from discussions in small groups with community members and community leaders and researchers. And they, the researchers told them, these are the tools we have, this is what we can study, we can ask questions about the microbiome, are there, and this is what it is, obviously, what would you like us to find out? They then put forward some proposals of what they would offer in return, so like paying for samples and that kind of thing. And the community actually wasn't happy with the proposal. And so they came up with their own proposal, and then the researchers engaged that. And they actually developed a really interesting model, it's a little bit off-topic, but it's an example of engagement that I've not seen before. They developed a cooperative where all of the samples taken from members of this study would be put into a, what they call a biobank. And if any discovery was made from those samples at any time about, with any research project, whether it was the original question or not, that led to any kind of financial gain, the community would gain, and everyone who contributed would share the profit. So for example, a drug came out of it, eventually, you know, company license information or discovery, then the royalties from that would go back to the community. And to me, that's engagement at like the final level of research, you know, taking it all the way through so that we don't have then, you know, somebody else gaining from what a community has contributed.
I think that's another example of vulnerable populations needing money, and may not have understood what you're saying. I mean, we have the, we're an organization, we actually teach communities what to expect from researchers.
Yep.
And to keep them fully engaged is what I think we're trying to do here, but on that, that's a new word, people wouldn't understand, and I just don't know how much information they had on that, and to understand what you were doing.
Lloyd Michener from Community Engagement. I guess I'd like to first thank you for the leadership on the microbiome project, because I've seen what that research can do with some of our very small babies, many of whom come from our communities that we're most concerned about, and the way it has helped save lives. So I think there really is, we're onto something really important. But your point about we need to find a method to do this, there actually is an HHS guidance house, which is done by the NIs and CDC and ACDR, called Community Engagement. You may find that actually useful, because it really looked across multiple communities, multiple agencies, what are best practices and methods, and what have we learned over the years about methods engagement? What you're hearing here is a snapshot of that wisdom and lessons from our, from a broad spectrum of communities, it may be helpful.
Thank you, very useful.
Thank you, Dr. Hammond.